Of course. Thank you.
Today is your day, isn't it?
It is.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
I will turn my mic on, thank you. So we are live now, right? All right, we got the thumbs up. All right, welcome back, everybody. Thank you for coming back together this Friday afternoon. So, Tim, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners and Budget Team. Our presentation today will focus on the Division of Fund. At least that's what it's been called in the past, Culture and Rec. And you will hear about the performance, opportunities, and challenges regarding parks, the Cedric County Zoo, Exploration Place, and some community programs. And while I've got your attention, I'm going to cover some additional programs funded in the Community Development Budget. This afternoon here, I've got Mark Schruf, Dr. Jeff Etting, and Adam Smith to help with the presentation. We'll begin with Parks on page 920. I'll run through this, and if there are questions, Mark or I will be able to answer them for you. As you can see, this is a small department with seven full-time regular positions and some part-time and seasonal positions. Those, that limited staff is responsible across these three different locations for management of almost 1,800 acres of parkland, five lakes, including the 258-acre Lake Afton, a dozen shelters, over 200 camping sites, and a thriving combination bait and convenience store. Cedric County Park hosts runs and walks most weekends between October and April, as well as birthday, graduation, and retirement parties. There are walkers, runners, and bikers there every day of the year. As you've heard from other departments, in terms of challenges, low wages have made it difficult to be fully staffed. At least one of the three building maintenance positions that cover the two different parks has been vacant for the past 18 months. So 33% vacancy rating to cover all of that work, that 1,800 acres and all those shelters. Blue-green algae is a threat each season at Lake Afton Park, has a significant impact on park attendance, park and store revenue, and guest enjoyment. As we've discussed before, location and limited development at Northeast Cedric County Park has limited its usage. You will see a decision package later on that will help, that would help address the development issue at and with the Cedric County Park. Recently refreshed master, recently refreshed master plan at Cedric County Park will help guide future development and enhancements there, and a study being conducted by PPMC to look at collaboration and consolidation with the city could create a number of new park opportunities as well. In terms of budget numbers, there's a slight increase in contractuals anticipated in 2022. That's based on some liquor tax funds, funds that have been saved up over the last couple of years. 2020 was a very good year for liquor tax, and so that will be an opportunity to do some projects in 2022. There is one decision package for the parks, and I mentioned that earlier. The parks would like $20,000 to invest in a master plan, hiring an architect to develop a master plan for Northeast Cedric County Park. If that, once that's completed, that plan could drive CIP requests for a number of years. There's your number of 20,000, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the parks.
Oh, just an observation, that Northeast Park, it's got a lot of history, and I'm not sure how the Commission feels. 20,000 doesn't appear to be a big number to maybe do a, a master plan to look at all the options. It's got a lot of land up there, but it's got the limitations, and so personally, it's not high on my radar either way, but if, if that would help us know what we have and don't have, that's probably helpful, beneficial, but I don't. So anybody else got any comments? I don't, oh, Commissioner Dennis yet?
Well, I concur with Commissioner Meitzner. Our budget is very tight. I know 20,000 isn't a whole lot of money, based on $450 million budget, but if we're looking at other things that might be more important, I, I don't know that that's real high on my agenda right now to spend 20,000 for a study. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. I, I think this ought to be citizen-led. I think this is the people's park. We are encumbered with it, and we've had a lot of ideas thrown out there from bicycle, you know, trails to gun range. I've even thrown out the idea that we ought to use it for the tree limb collection point, things like that. So I think this ought to be citizen-led. I'm not sure what $20,000 will do for us in terms of how the process will work, whether commissioners will have input, whether the citizens will have input. I think that if I knew the process, and I knew for sure citizens would be driving a lot of this discussion, I would be supportive potentially, but without some more information, I guess I need to know how this money will be used.
Once we, if we had funding available, we would work with, and we'd select, we'd probably use one of the on-call architect firms and talk through a process that would be heavily dependent upon input from the community, from commissioners, and then let them use their expertise to, to design something that makes sense based on what they hear.
Well, I'm not against the idea of, of developing that into something. I mean, as it is right now, it's a, it's a lost opportunity, and again, it might generate revenue that would pay for the improvements. We've seen that, again, we need to have vision and leadership to put all this together, but I guess my, my concern is that we would not include the citizens and the people that we serve, and so that's, I have to have some assurance that that's the process we would follow.
Yeah, I think any good master plan, at least the initial one, would require a lot of community input.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. What were the appropriate, what were the uses that we could use this for?
Well, anything that is considered park use by the Department, the Federal Department of Wildlife and Parks, it meets those criteria. It can't be commercial property. It needs to be some kind of recreational part or park use based on the encumbrances that are placed on it. But other than that, it's pretty wide open. It could be camping, it could be bike motocross, it could, you know, we use it for horse trails right now, it could be lots of fishing, many different things. But I think for us to make highest use of it, it would be helpful to have some experts weigh in on what makes most sense.
Okay, I've been out there a couple times with my dogs. I wonder if people would utilize it more if they knew about it more. I mean, how, it's kind of way out there. I don't disagree that something needs to be done with it, but considering the constraints that we're under this year, I don't know that this year is the most appropriate time. I wonder if, I don't know what the will of this board, board is, but I mean, could we open it up to citizens right now? I mean, why couldn't we have a, have a citizen input? I mean, that doesn't cost us any money, and maybe we could develop some ideas. Maybe there are some, there are some smart people in this community who have great ideas. Maybe that would save us some money. Maybe we could have an idea developed without having to spend $20,000. So that's kind of where I sit on this.
Okay. Okay.
The only thing I'd add to that, Commissioners, if, if we would do a citizen-led exploratory search, I would want to make it clear that whatever, whether we, whether the citizens drive it, or whether we have a group do a master plan, there's going to be money affixed to this at the end of the program. And so often, citizens complain that we ask them, or we, we, you know, we survey them, and then we don't do anything with it. I don't want to set us up for a situation where we hear from citizens, and they put effort and work into it, create the plan, and then the Commission or the county has no ability to move forward with any of it. So I would want to qualify, I don't think that's a terrible idea to have citizens lead this. I think it's, we could do it at no cost, but I want to make it clear to the front end that their, their mission would be to set a, what could happen at this park, recognizing that there could be, there's gonna be expense to it if, if we go down that track, so.
Well, and perhaps it would be a way to drive people to it.
And we did, you know, we did a video, I may have to ask Tanya, we did a video a year or two ago.
Tony is adamantly shaking his head in the back.
That he did.
He's going crazy with that head.
So I, we, we, we tried, Tony himself starred in that video, as I recall. So we have, we have tried to market this. It's, I don't know if it had, I don't know if we did any kind of measurement to determine if that had any impact or not, but anyway, just good suggestions, so.
Thanks for the feedback. Okay.
I'm going to turn it over to Jeff and let Jeff talk about the zoo.
Yeah, one, one quick comment. Most of us have a Citizens Advisory Board. I don't know if it wouldn't be a good idea, just take it to our Citizens Advisory Board and see what kind of options that they can come up with, and they don't have to come up with it at the next meeting. We can have it as an action item for them to think about, and then bring it up to us at a future meeting. Just an option.
Yes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Hi.
Thanks for having me here this afternoon. I'm going to use one visual for a little bit here while I talk a little bit more about the zoo. I put together a high-level organization chart that I hope will help clarify the, the division between society staff and, and county staff. The, the mission of the zoo, in fact, as of adopted in 2019 with our new strategic plan, is inspiring respect and conservation for wildlife and wild places. The zoo is funded through a unique partnership between the Cedric County government and the Cedric County Zoological Society Incorporated, and is formalized through a 50-year operating agreement between these two entities. The society, which I've designated in green for money-making on, on this high-level org chart here, is, operates the zoo through the agreement with the county. They set all the membership fees, entrance fees, and they use the revenue to pay most of the operating costs of the zoo, determine which exhibits need to be renovated, built, et cetera, at the zoo, and do capital campaigns to raise funding for these new facilities. The county owns and ensures all the facilities. The county also provides funding for all county employees who work for the zoo, and funds half of our capital improvement budget. So here on this chart, you can see that of my six direct reports, I have three that are county staff and three that are society staff. You'll also note that there are a few society staff that also report to county staff. We have an animal welfare coordinator we hired two years ago. We have a safety and security department operates under there, and then more recently, this past year, we just hired an IT manager that works on the society side as well. Everything on that lower tier are all strictly society employees in terms of finance, our philanthropy and community engagement department, and business operations. So I'm going to skip that one, because I talked about that already. Obviously, 2020 was just as challenging for us as it was for most other entities throughout the community. We had to make the hard decision on March the 13th to close the zoo. It was the day we were supposed to open our newly renovated bistro and have SSA Group take over food. We closed it, we closed up shop that day. We were closed for eight weeks, reopened on May the 18th. That eight-week closure, none of us would have, you know, thought earlier that it would have the kind of dramatic impact on our finances that it, it did, but we were estimating approximately a $1.5 million deficit due to that closure for eight weeks, right during field trip season, you know, prime spring season, we get a lot of our visitation. So we ended up, the, ending the year with an attendance of about 303,000 people, which is probably the lowest attended years we've had in a long, long time. I can say that we actually ended the year a lot better than we anticipated. We didn't end with a $1.5 million deficit. We ended up with about 900, but it's actually half of that because our PPP loan that we had through the society didn't get forgiven until January of this year. So we really were only in the hole about $408,000, so about a third of what we anticipated. Still not ideal, but a lot better than where, where we started out. We feel very fortunate that we didn't have to lay anybody off. Thank the, thank all of you for making that possible. We're one of the few zoos in this country that didn't have to lay off staff. Some of them are still understaffed at this point due to all the decisions they had to make last year, so I'm, I'm very happy that we were able to keep everybody working. We did, we were in the midst of finishing up the largest capital campaign in the zoo's history, $15.1 million. We had to halt that for a few months, but I'm happy to report that we did complete that earlier this year. We do have a budget, attendance budget this year of about 460,000. I can tell you that as of the end of April, we're about 12,000 above where we thought we'd be year-to-date. So attendance is really great. We're, we're seeing great attendance on the weekends. This past weekend, between Saturday and Sunday, we had close to 9,000 people. So they're coming out, so that's good. Here you can see the personnel and contractuals I mentioned earlier. The big reduction you can see on line two by about 82% is due to the last of the three commitments for the front entry project was met, so that's why that's dropped so significantly. And you can see overall at the bottom between the 21 revised budget and what is requested for this year, for next year, I should say, that it's about a 22% reduction. So do have three decision packages that have been submitted for personnel. First one's on page 937 through 938. It's for a zookeeper, asking for $55,689. One of the things that we discovered through our last accreditation inspection, and this was also noted five years previous to that, so we're looking at 10 years now, is that our staffing levels for the size of our zoo and where we're at in terms of animal welfare needs is, is below where it should be. So the positions that I'm asking for are in our strategic plan, but also meet the needs of what the AZA, the Association of Zoos and Aquarians, has requested of us. So that's the first one. The second one is an educational, education specialist for $63,097. Last year, we had a zookeeper in the request. Obviously, we pulled all of that when COVID hit. That position would have been for the new Asian Big Cat Trek that's under construction right now. In order to fill that position, we had an open education specialist, so we reclassed it to meet the needs for this new exhibit that's opening. So this is to refill that education specialist that we did away with due to the need over in, in Big Cat. And then the last one is a custodian for $44,617. The last custodian added at the zoo was in 2011. We've obviously grown a lot in the last 10 years, so with the, particularly with the, the new front entry coming online, the custodial needs, not only there, but in other facilities around the zoo, has grown quite a bit. So you can see here, the, the total requested for these three positions is $163,403. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Cruz.
Man, looking at this custodial position, that's a full-time position?
It is.
For $19,000 a year? Well, what they're going to take home is 19,000, their benefits are 24?
Yeah, we, we've talked about that. Right now, we're, we had, the supervisor and the three positions we currently had had been there long-term. They all retired in the last two years, and so now it's become a revolving door, partly because of, of what you just mentioned. So it's, it's a tough position for us to keep filled right now because of the, the funds available for that.
Wow, okay. And then one other question, we've had some questions around the cost to enter our zoo compared to other places around, and I don't know if you want to answer this, or Tim, you've kind of already answered it, but since we're in this setting. Why, why, can you address why our, why our zoo costs the way, the way, how much it costs? I can't even speak today.
Yeah.
Why does it cost that much?
A lot of it's supply and demand in terms of the number of people versus the services, and also just the cost of operation. So typically, what happens in most zoos across the country is that admission fees get raised every four to five years, which is what we just did this past year. But, you know, our electric costs, our gas costs, everything keeps going up, our cost of, of feed for the animals, so that's why the, the admission fee goes up, you know, kind of in a four-year basis or so. What most zoos are looking at, and we're in this, in the same boat too, is to look at more incremental. We've outsourced this past year. We started in 2021 with SSA doing our food. This year, we made the decision to outsource our retail and ticketing to them. They have a great team that's going to be able to help us with potentials for dynamic pricing moving forward, but also to look at more incremental increases rather than doing a big jump every four or five years like we just did, that should help. But when you look at some of the other zoos, it's also based on population size too, so it's kind of unfair to compare one zoo to another, because if they have, you know, a 3 million-person metroplex, if you, if you have more people coming in, you can actually keep your, your cost at the gate a lot lower than what it might be where you're only drawing a half a million people average, like we are. That makes sense.
The other thing was how they're funded as well.
Yeah. A lot of them, a lot of the zoos that were, were brought up or received tax support too, like Kansas City gets an additional 15 million, St. Louis gets 25 million in sales tax and another, oh, I can't remember if it's about 25 or so in personal property tax too, so it's a, it's a fairly sizable number. So a lot of those zoos have other funding sources other than their, their gate.
Thank you for addressing that.
Yep, yep.
Commissioner Des.
Thank you. Hello, Dr. Etting, thank you very much for being here. We're very proud of the zoo, the number-one tourist attraction in the state of Kansas, and we're proud of the plans that you have going forward. I do have one question on the decision package number three. And mainly, it's for staff. I know we're constantly getting different things in boards of bids and contracts where that we're contracting out custodial services, and I didn't know if we could add this to some of our contracts rather than hiring someone. Is it cheaper to contract it, or is it cheaper to hire somebody? Because everybody else is contracting it.
Tanya, I might have you come to the podium, but we can consider that. I can't think of a reason not to consider just contracting that. I don't know unless, unless Dr. Jeff has an idea on that, but Tanya, you want to talk just briefly about what we do internally versus what we do contract out?
Sure. Commissioners, so we do have some, we have a couple of staff that are on hand that does custodial work, but for the most part, we contract out on our custodial services. And we'd be happy to talk to Dr. Jeff about our, our custodial services and, and the cost to do that, but again, for the most part, on custodial services, we contract out for our buildings.
Very good, well, thank you. That's a beautiful new entrance that we're having. I know we want to keep it nice, but I just want to make sure that we're doing the same thing across the board, so thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks. All right, Dr. I don't see anything else, and so thanks for the presentation. Good luck with this successful year this year.
Okay, thank you.
Next up.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Happy Friday.
Happy Friday.
Exploration Place. The org chart, I am, I, I think you know this, but just to recap, I'm the only county employee at Exploration Place. Everyone else reports to me, but they work for, for Exploration Place and the nonprofit. So I, we have a sort of a dual reporting structure. Eighteen months into it, I can tell you, for me, it works pretty well, and I hope it, hope you feel it works well for you too. It's, it's not, you, it's slightly abnormal, but, but, you know, sometimes abnormal works just fine. We have about 70 employees, roughly 50/50 split between permanent staff and, and seasonal and part-time staff. It nets out at about 56 full-time equivalents. We just approved, the board just approved a strategic plan about, about two weeks ago. We made a very tiny adjustment to our mission statement that I wanted to flag for you. The previous mission statement ended with creative and fun experiences for all ages. We've changed that to just say for all, to, not to, we, we want to appeal to all ages, as we always have, but we felt that just saying we want to, we want to be for everybody was a stronger statement than, than previously. About 35% of our annual operating budget comes from Cedric County. The remaining 65%, we earn ourselves through earned revenue, fundraising, and so on. As I've reported to you previously, it's been a very interesting year managing through COVID. It's, the difficult side has been managing a visitor attraction, particularly one that's completely indoors, and so that definitely hurt our attendance in the past year. As you can see, we're, we're down to 154,000 versus 278,000 the previous year. We were closed for 109 days, and even when we reopened last July, you know, we were seeing numbers 20% of what we normally would see. The good news is, since I, I last spoke to you, since the turn of the year, it was almost like January 1 turned people's mentality. It's been coming back a lot stronger since then. March was a really good month for us in, in several of our business categories. We were actually ahead of a, of a good year, so we're currently running about 75% of, of normal attendance, but the trend line is headed, headed in the right direction, so that's good to see. But the, the really strong positive thing throughout the pandemic has been the growing educational outreach programming, the, the sort of rapid adoption of distance learning technology in our whole society, and particularly in our schools. I know there's like maybe a little bit of a backlash against it. We sort of joke that we're tired of Zoom calls and things like that, but it has truly opened a huge door of opportunity for Exploration Place. We can see it in our numbers. We have seen exponential growth in our ability to reach kids and get education out into the community, and so, you know, it, time, time will tell exactly what all this means. I think we're still in the middle of it, but we feel that we've, we've, you know, we've opened up a really, really interesting thing, and you can see it in the numbers. Challenges and opportunities, as I said, we're, we're 75% of normal. There, there's been some studies about what all this is going to mean to museums and the projections are. It may take a year or two to get back to 100% of where we were before the pandemic. An example is membership. It, it takes a long time to build a membership base, and unfortunately, we lost round about 40% of our members during the pandemic, because when, when the number-one value of membership is a season ticket to Exploration Place to come as many times as you want, we went through months where people, they couldn't even visit, and, and it was very sort of sketchy, so the numbers have been picking up for us, but it'll, it just takes time to build that, build that back to where it is, and that's a significant driver of our visitation and things like that. I would like to come and brief you in much more detail on the strategic plan that we just approved. I thank you all as Commissioners, because you all had individual input to it, along with lots of other parts of the community. But for me and for us as an organization, I think it's, it's really great time to be looking at the next five years of opportunity ahead of us. I think the most visible thing that we'd like to take on is we'd like to take on is a development of our, um, of our site. Um, a, a lot of what's been done at Exploration Place the last twenty-one years has been what we do inside the buildings, but we're on a really tremendous twenty-acre riverfront property there. And we're looking around at the country, at, um, science centers and communities have done some really interesting things with outdoor education, outdoor play, adventure play, and so on. The Gathering Place down in Tulsa, Oklahoma is a great example of huge success there. So we're inspired by that. Um, we're, we're gonna be, uh, moving forward with that. And I think, um, for me, it's a really interesting time as well from a funding and fundraising perspective. There are some challenges, but also the, the American Rescue Plan Act and, and, um, the infrastructure bill is creating some really interesting opportunities. And I know you're familiar with this from a community-wide perspective, and I think in terms of getting some early momentum on our five-year plan, we, we, we see some really interesting opportunities there. Um, Exploration Place is in, our fiscal year, I think you know, is not synchronized with, with Cedric County. We start on July one each year. So this year, we're in years three and four of a five-year funding agreement with Cedric County. Um, you can see the, you can see what that means financially there. Um, and I'm happy to take any and all questions.
Okay, Adam, I'll comment that I, I don't know if it was luck or your staff or your, or your own brilliance, but, but coming up with this education outreach program in this off-year was just fantastic. I know you talked to it before, but, um, I, I congratulate you all on that, and now, as we're getting back to normal.
Little bit of luck in the sense that I inherited a first-class staff. You know, when I, I should have mentioned when we were on the staffing chart, usually in a given year, fifty to sixty percent of every dollar we spend is on our own people. And in that area of my organization, I ju, I did look at that I just had a group of people that, given the opportunity, you know, and the freedom to go for it, they went for it and did amazing things.
Yeah, like you said, and it reached people interstate, even internationally. So my congrats to you and your staff.
Thank you.
Got a couple questions from Commissioners. Lopez.
Thank you. Well, I really just want to applaud everything that you are doing. My family is a huge Exploration Place family, so we have our memberships and we come, you know, as often as we can. I love the idea of doing something outside, so it's not just, you know, an indoor place, bad-weather place. It's really any day, every day. Um, I, I just applaud everything you've done over the past year and look forward to seeing what we can go, what we can do in the future.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. Adam, good to see ya. Um, I am really excited about the Twenty-Acre Riverfront, and I'm glad that you've seen that potential, so I'm glad to hear about that as long, um, along with Commissioner Lopez. But you have something going on this Sunday? Can you talk to us about that?
Uh, well, we have two things going on this weekend. First of all, it's Death by Chocolate on Saturday, um, which is our big fundraiser. It's been a real journey. There was a time when we even considered canceling it because normally it would take place in February and, um, um, you know, there just wasn't a good time to try and bring a whole bunch of people into the building, and no one wanted to do a virtual event and sit behind laptops and things like that. Um, so the committee stuck with us, and we, we, we set a date of May the eighth very deliberately. We're in changeover between our exhibits, so we've, we have an empty building and some, and so for everyone that's coming tomorrow evening, we've got some great surprises for them. I'm really excited. Um, yeah, it, it, it's a sold-out event, um, which I'm really delighted with. Um, it's really gonna help, it's our number-one fundraiser, so that's really gonna help the budget a lot. Um, but actually, I, very deliberately the way we've designed the event, we give, we're testing some of the ideas that we want to roll into the future of Exploration Place. When you come tomorrow, there's gonna be a band playing outside on the riverfront, um, chance to get some food and drink, not just inside Exploration Place, but understand this is an amazing location and the view out over the keeper, et cetera, et cetera. Um, some of the things we're doing with inside, in the dome theater, in the traveling exhibit gallery, the way we're using light and sound and things like that, um, would, yeah. So that's happening Saturday. Sunday is Mother's Day, and it's free entry for mothers, uh, at Exploration Place.
Awesome. Well, thank you for being here, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Very nice. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. I just, before you, before you all three got away, I do, I just wanted to say once again that I'm very impressed with Jeff and with you, Adam, especially because of the transition you've had to go through, um, replacing some of our esteemed community leaders that have done this for a very, very long time, and yet transition's a little bit scary for the community, and I think we got through all that and landed on our feet really well. And so, and I, I, I also want to appreciate Mark as well. We have great culture opportunities in Cedric County, and I think the three of you do a tremendous job. I just want, I'm gonna, I want to make sure I did that. And you know, um, uh, Adam especially, your timing is interesting because you got here right, right in front of a pandemic. And, uh, that was a, that brought a lot of, very unique challenges, and you, you obviously have a very, very good board, and you got through that. And I think that, uh, coming out of this right now, we have more excitement, we have more vision, we have, we have, uh, things to look forward to. So you, you didn't just have a challenge, but you came out stronger than you went in. So, um, I just want to say I appreciate your leadership and appreciate what you provided to Cedric County, all three of you. Um, this, this is a very, very good part of this budget, um, briefing today to see some good things, and, and you, you three make it happen. So thanks for your leadership.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Cruz.
I just wanted to point out that I love the mission statements of both the zoo and, um, I just want to point out that I love both the mission statements of the zoo and Exploration Place. You guys start with "To Inspire," so I love that. Just wanted to point that out.
Very inspirational. Thank you.
Inspirational.
Okay, I don't see any other questions.
Thank you.
All right, Adam. Thanks.
So Culture and Rec kind of provides you a look at a lot of different models and ways to implement, um, county programming. We started with the park. That was all county staff that do that work. The zoo, there's a split between county staff and society staff. Exploration Place, one county employee. Now I'm gonna talk about a couple of things where there's no county employees involved. Um, on page nine forty-three, we've got our community programs budget. Um, and this is funds that we use, that the county uses to support local agencies that, um, provide significant contribution to the quality of life in Cedric County. We have five different entities that are funded. You can see those amounts there, and that total is three hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars. As you've heard from both the zoo and Exploration Place, uh, COVID has had a significant impact on all cultural arts and recreation entities and the way that they deliver their programming. Funding for the programs that, that are included in this budget have been flat for a number of years with the exception of a few one-time capital contributions. Operating costs continue to increase, which dilutes the contribution that the county makes. And, um, I think one of the opportunities that's available for all of these entities is the, the consideration around consolidation, collaboration between city and county. Um, there may be new funding opportunities, um, that are become available that way. And I just want to remind everyone that these col, uh, quality-of-life amenities and all the things that we've already talked about so far contribute to economic development as well. This budget is fifty thousand dollars less based on a reduction of some one-time funding that TCAM received in two thousand and twenty-one. This is a summary of the decision packages for the division. Um, three positions, one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about the community programs or the entire Culture and Rec division.
Tim, I don't see any right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
While I have your attention, I'd like to cover two more, um, budgets. They begin on page nine sixty. They're in, they're part of the community development budget. Um, and, uh, there are two programs involved. Their extension and another community programs area. We're not very creative when it comes to naming things in the budget, so there's lots of community program budgets. But, um, Extension Center is, uh, dedicated to safe and, uh, safe competitive food and fiber system and a strong, healthy, strong, healthy communities, families, and youth through integrated research, analysis, and education. Um, the Extension Center provides education, programming, that's related to, um, the betterment of the community and the, and the folks that live there, with a real focus and attention on developing leaders for the future. So they, they spend a lot of time and effort with kids and trying to develop kids and making them, helping them become leaders. Um, in terms of challenges and opportunities, uh, the nature and delivery of education changed dramatically. You listen to what Adam talked about, um, how that changed for him. Uh, same things happened at Extension Center. They've switched a lot of the programming that they typically did in person to, um, distance-type learning throughout the course of the past year, and they're slowly develop, slowly transitioning back to in-person. But they've developed a new model for delivering the, the content that they have, um, going forward. Their funding has been flat as well, um, and they were impacted significantly in two thousand and twenty because some of the revenue they generate is based on, uh, space rental, and so that was almost all gone for them. They continue to look for new partners, and they're, uh, making conscious efforts to reach out into parts of the community that they haven't necessarily touched in the past, and so they're doing a nice job in that regard. Their budget request, um, remains flat, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars. That number has not changed for a number of years. And finally, um, there, on page nine sixty, we've got some community programs. There are two different contracts that are involved here. One is with the Wichita Transit Authority for serving the unincorporated area of Oaklawn, and then we've got a small contract with the Mediation Center. Um, I think we all recognize that transportation has been changing over the last few years, and, um, there are new, different, new and different models for transportation. We're going to use the aging program to, with the Department on Aging, their transportation brokerage is gonna do a study of what's going on in Oaklawn and see if there's a different model that may be able to make better use of the funding that's available in this particular contract. Ridership has, has been a struggle. It was a significant struggle during the pandemic, and, um, it gives aging an opportunity to look at some different models and see if there's a different way to, uh, provide transportation service to that area of the community. Uh, the mediation program was implemented a number of years ago as a way to provide an alternative to keep people out of the courts. We heard, um, a couple days ago how congested the court system is, particularly after being stopped for a while. Um, I'm gonna have conversations with the courts to make sure that this is still a good value for them and make sure that it's doing what they need it to do. Um, the total of the two contracts remains the same, forty-seven, forty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. I'd be happy to answer any questions about that as well.
Tim, I don't see any so far. Commissioner Cruz.
The eight thousand, the eight thousand dollars for, uh, the Mediation Center, um, do they handle, can, can we get a breakdown through the courts exactly what kind of cases they mediate?
Sure, I'll, I'll get something from them and send that to you.
Okay, specifically, I'm looking for, um, evictions, and how are we handling those? If we can.
Gotcha.
Thanks.
Okay. I don't see anything else, Tim. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner.
Okay, Commissioners, our next presentation is the Division of Finance and Finance Programs, starting on page eighty-four of your binders, and Lindsay will be presenting.
Commissioner, please introduce yourself to the.
Yeah, I know, I'm totally a new face to you, aren't I? God bless you poor people having us on a Friday afternoon.
Again, what page are we starting on, Lauren? Eighty-four?
Eighty-four.
Thank you, Akeem.
It's like reading the Bible.
That is, that would be awesome. Yeah. Yeah, I love that. I have been before, but I. Okay, apologize for that.
You didn't, you didn't forget the coffee or the Red Bull. You just forgot the.
I forgot to get them passed out to you. I mean, come on, priorities. There are also, just so you know, if you need five seconds, our cookies down here if you're worried about falling asleep, or you can grab one after. And I will just remind you that I am, I mean, there's discussions scheduled after this, but I'm between you and the end of your day potentially, so it is up to you.
Okay, so far I don't see any questions. Thank you for the presentation.
That's what I thought. I'm happy to go sit. So, we will move through pretty quickly, uh, but do stop me if you have questions.
And all kidding aside, this is very important.
It is. Uh, and I would just take a moment, well, we'll, I'll get to that. So, finance, though we do prepare your budget for you, we actually have responsibility for about sixty million dollars worth of your total budget in the two thousand and twenty-two request. Of that, about thirteen percent is, oh, and we have a typo on this one, I apologize. Um, there, we are about, uh, thirteen percent of your, uh, or thirteen percent of our budget is on operations. So the rest of it is dedicated to other things. So you'll see on this presentation, eight-point-one million is actually for our day-to-day operations. Then there are portions of our budget, um, throughout the book. Uh, yes, I know you're seeing the last line. I've already pointed it out, sir, so you don't get credit for that one. Uh, so, um, Finance Operations is the number one. Those are the pages that Lauren just directed you to. Uh, we're gonna walk through the rest of these, but immediately behind that is budgeted transfers, contingency reserves. Uh, then we'll flip back to your next tab for bonded interest. Then we'll flip back to Culture and Rec to talk about the arena, because as the CFO, I'm also acting as your contract administrator with ASM Global. Um, and so we fit that presentation in here, even though it really is a Culture and Rec, um, agency. And then, uh, we'll move to community development and talk about economic development and, uh, WSU. And I will have some additional information for you, Commissioner Cruz, based on some of the questions you asked the other day. So, this is probably the most interesting org chart you're gonna see. This is our little honeycomb. Uh, we, this was a new thing this year, so we actually gave this to Jamie Whitmer, who is in our purchasing department, uh, as a project. She has some great design skills, and she came up with this. So my thanks to her for making something that maybe was otherwise a little more boring, a little more exciting and kind of fun. So, that's our honeycomb org chart. And so you can see, um, we have lots of functions that we do. Uh, and so you'll see at the top, we have the CFO. Reporting to me includes, uh, the deputy CFO, our internal financial auditors, which we have two, um, who played a large role in our cares management, and we have our administrative manager. Um, and I believe most of them are here. So we have Jessica Osmeier, who's our administrative manager here with us. We have Elizabeth Wingo in risk management with us. Obviously, Lauren is our budget director. Brent and hiding in the corner kind of a little bit. Um, and then, of course, Beth works in budget, and is my budget analyst. God bless her. Uh, so we have a lot of folks that do a lot of great work. Um, thankfully, one of the stories you will not hear out of finance for now, I'm gonna knock on wood, is we have not had a tremendous amount of turnover, uh, in the last year, year and a half. Um, and so these people have done absolutely phenomenal work with all of the work with PPE, trying to keep up with thousands of agreements, cares changing guidance. This group of people has gone above and beyond. Um, Brent gave me a great little quip, uh, to play off of Jim Weber's slide yesterday, not just a steep hill, but a step hill. Uh, and they have done it with grace, uh, and have truly done a phenomenal job, and I could not be more proud of the folks who are represented on this org chart. So, uh, talking about the funding for Finance Operations, uh, this two thousand and twenty-two request includes the majority of our funding in the County General Fund, but then we also have two what are called internal service funds, where, um, these funds are dedicated for a specific purpose. So both of those are operated by Elizabeth Wingo, who's our, uh, risk management coordinator. We have the workers' compensation fund. We are mostly self-insured for workers' compensation, and the way that is funded is that we assess charges against departments based on the number of claims they have and the dollar value of those claims. And so we try and accrue about two million dollars to those charges each year. And then the risk management fund gets a very small amount of claim recoveries typically. Obviously, last year was an anomaly with. sections or departments of Finance, and each of those are broken out, and their details are broken out. But just at a high level, this slide kind of shows you what we do. So in the CFO's office, we're obviously responsible for the strategic planning, capital planning, division oversight, the tax system oversight, kind of the coordinator between all of the various parties that touch that system. We have contract management, as I've talked about, Internal Financial Audit, Risk Management Coordination. We obviously have the audit that is paid, that contractual service is paid for out of the CFO's office. And then, of course, one of the newest highlights of our roles in CFO is overseeing all of the federal funding that's coming in. So we've learned a lot in the last year, much smarter people than we were. Within accounting, of course, we pay. We pay people who work for us. I know we're pretty popular for that. And then, of course, we pay vendors, which is also very important, because a lot of our vendors are local. And so, we want to make sure that we do that in a timely fashion. And of course, we do grant administration, do timely completion of the audit report, and oversee work comp. Then within budget, of course, that lovely long sheet that you saw, that Commissioner Dennis was attributing all the red to me, actually, I don't know if I'm throwing people under the bus or giving credit where credit is due. I tend to think the latter. But that is actually the work of Lauren Showalter-Ari and the four Budget, now three Budget Analysts, but four positions. So, they do tremendous work to prepare that document. Again, that is the basis for many of the decisions, so it's one of the most critical functions I think we do within Finance. Of course, then monitoring this process and facilitating that, and then overseeing the budget once you've approved it. And then finally, Purchasing is really good at spending our money, right? That's what we pay them to do. They do requests for bids, again, which is based on dollars, and they do requests for proposals, where we say, here's our problem, come to us with a solution and tell us, tell us how much it's going to cost and what it's going to look like. So for us, in the near future, we have quite a few challenges, but opportunities too. So, of course, we know that the legislature continues to throw us curveballs, and so we're continuing to grapple with those, as those come in, do the analysis, and then respond appropriately, as, including at least for now, most eminently for us, is that impact of the Senate Bill 13 and that change that drives our budget process. So we'll have more discussion about that before long. Of course, we know federal ARPA funding is coming down. We have varying bets on when that guidance is going to come. It's actually technically due Tuesday. Some of us have bets that it's going to come out today, because it's the Friday before holiday weekend, and that's what they typically like to do with us. So, we'll see. But we'll, of course, keep you up to date on that. We know that other entities are going to receive money right now. The understanding is $190 million is flowing into our community directly. We are receiving $100 million of that, but it's all going to be subject to be used the same way, so collaboration on that will be critical. There will be other federal funding opportunities. We're already hearing about them. Jim Weber has talked with you about several related to transportation. We need to make sure we're in a position to leverage those. And then, of course, trying to help you all solve the budget challenges that you've heard about. Compensation is a huge one. Insurance, not just employee health, but the property insurance. As we've talked about, we expect a $330,000 increase in our property insurance premiums this year. Claims management, service delivery, technology, all of these things. We know we're getting a new financial system, because why wouldn't you want to do another financial system in the middle of $100 million of federal funding, right? And then, we know that there are a number of strategic plan initiatives. You all adopted, or this commission adopted, a strategic plan at the end of 2019. We expect now that COVID is beginning to settle, it will be time to pick that back up. And so we will need to be in a position to assist you with that. And then, of course, we were the victims of fraud back in 2016, lost about $567,000. And so, we just see that those fraud attempts, small and large, are getting increasingly sophisticated. And so, making sure that our staff are prepared to handle those, identify them and stop them is a key for us. So I'm going to show you two slides now, talking about Finance Operations. This slide includes COVID funding. This isn't necessarily the real picture of Finance Operations, though. We put all this money here so that we could centrally manage it and make sure everything was done in accordance with the rules. So you will see that our 2020 revised budget totaled about $53.6 million, and we have an 85% decrease in our 2022 request as a result. We don't really get that much credit for saving you that much money. A lot of that is just COVID and residual cares funding. So, if we move to the next slide and look at our actual operations, you'll see that in 2021, earlier this year, you all approved a budget adjustment for Risk Management to pay out those zoo claims. And so our actual normal budget this year is $11.7 million. We expect that to be $8.1 million because we did have that one-time zoo cost that we had to pay to repair those facilities this year out of the Risk Management budget. So next year, we'll look a lot more normal in terms of a typical budget year, until ARPA funding comes in and we adjust the budget. We do have two decision packages for your consideration. The first one is to add a full-time grant administrator. This is something that really came out of strategic plan, but it's something that has been fed even more, based on how much federal funding has come out, and also based on the fact that now we're hearing earmarks are in play. And so, we need to ensure that we have staffing to handle that. We also know in the strategic plan that growing our grant capacity, being able to provide greater service, grant-writing services to departments, is something that has been identified as a need by the rest of the organization. And so, we don't typically come to you with many decision packages. We know that there's a lot going on this year, but this is a hot topic, and hopefully, if we can do this right and get funding, this is something that potentially could be paid for through administrative charges or other fees that we can get. Yes, sir?
So, do over the course of the year, you know, I'll send you an email or whatever if we get a, if I see a grant hits our inbox. But so, but like Corrections and Comp Care, do they write their own grants?
Yes. Right now, they do.
And would they still, those that are familiar, would they still do their grant writing? And this would be more opportunity grant writing position?
We would certainly see them continuing to do that work if they wanted to. But what we would hope that this role could do, and we actually have a position paper that goes into greater detail that we can provide for you if you're interested, but what we would want to do with this is actually have this person go out and search for grants that make good sense, that align with our strategic plan, not go after every dollar that's out there, but things that make sense, and then actually assist departments with putting together those grants. We're not subject matter experts in Finance. The departments are. And so, we would have to rely heavily on those. And I know this is something that Tom has feelings on, so I'll defer to him.
This is what we're aspiring to, Chairman, is a system more like you're used to when you were with the city, where you actually have a flow chart of how grants work and operate. It's a team effort, as Lindsay talked about. We, this position gives us greater flexibility to run a more holistic grant achieving policy, which in county government is, I would say, even more critical than in a municipal government. So it gives us a chance to expand.
I agree. Okay. Thanks for the explanation. I appreciate it. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm delighted to see this, because if you remember correctly, before we started this whole bit, I talked about this for a good five minutes.
Yes, you did.
So, I'm excited to see this, and I will absolutely be 100% supportive of this. I think that there's money out there. We have to figure out how to get it. And it takes a lot of time for people to write these. It takes a lot of time to search, understand. So, Lindsay, thank you for putting this in here.
Our pleasure.
Okay. I don't see any other questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll go to our decision package number two. Again, this is for Finance Operations. So this probably shouldn't come as much of a surprise to you, because this is something that follows up on Elizabeth's presentation earlier this year in her strategic plan for Risk Management and making sure that we get a lot more responsive on safety. This slide shows some data that is troubling just from a financial perspective, let alone an impact to the individuals. So, we have $1.2 million of non-personnel expenses in Risk Management, or I'm sorry, a $1.2 million total in 2016. That went up to $2.2 million in 2020, and that didn't even include what we spent out of the General Fund for the fire that we had on this building that actually impacted this chamber here. Workers' compensation has increased from $1.4 million to $1.8 million in the same amount of time. The intention here would be to find best practices and implement them to address it. And with any kind of luck, again, just like with the grant administration, we could come up with enough savings, or at least stem the tide on these increases to hopefully offset the costs of this position. And Commissioner Dennis, I see your light is on.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I fully support this position.
No, he's, he's asking how I knew.
Oh.
I can see, I can see the red light on his microphone.
Okay.
When it's on. Yeah, I can see yours now.
This is part of your deal where you just think about it and send it?
I'm a mind reader.
Okay. Sorry. My apologies.
Well, thank you. Let me continue on. First of all, I fully support this. Just a couple recommendations as you move forward with this. It will pay for itself. Obviously, we have had a lot of expenses from accidents and so forth that if we had proper safety procedures in place and people were adhering to them, we wouldn't have had some of the expenses. I've sat on a couple court cases, and they are very expensive when we get to that point. The, my comments are, first of all, I, you're briefing this under Finance, and I know you've got Risk Management under Finance, but this position is so important, I think it belongs under the manager.
Okay.
That's the way that it worked for me when I was in the military. The Safety Office worked for the general, and I reported directly to the general. So, I think that that's, that's important. The second thing is I know, again, you've got a Risk Management group of people. I want to make sure that whoever you hire in this position has professional safety education, so that they, they can go out into the workplace and take a look at the, at the operations of every department we've got in the, in the workplace, and they can write reports and so forth. And those reports need to be formal reports that go back to the manager, so that the people, the different department heads, understand that whatever that they find is important enough that the manager has taken a look at it, and it's not to be blown off. Because what you find in any accident is if you break any chain in a series of events, any link in that chain, you're not going to have an accident. But as long as people continue the same way of doing things, we're going to continue to have accidents. So, I think it's critical that we have this position. I just, I'd like to make a couple tweaks to it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And I do not see any other questions at this time.
Okay. Well, this slide here summarizes the two decision packages that you just saw. Together, would add about $170,000 to the bottom line for the Finance Operations budget. So we are going to shift gears a little bit now. We are going to shift to the budgeted transfers portion of your budget. So under state law, we are only allowed to transfer money between funds if it is explicitly allowed by state law, and we basically have to have a resolution to do it. And so, in order to anticipate planned transfers, we have this section of the budget so that we can plan for that. So, we do know that, and that is funded 100% out of the County's General Fund. We do know that there are some items on the horizon that may result in increases. Number one is that, as we have talked about, and you'll see on your Cost of Doing Business Decision Package list on page four of your binder, we know our property insurance premiums are going up. We expect that those will go up from about $1.1 million to about $1.43 million, so a pretty significant increase in one year. We will talk more about that here in the coming months, because our next round of property insurance, insurance begins July 1, and so the commission will need to take action to approve that. So we'll come to you with some suggestions on what to do. But because Risk Management, as I said, is funded almost exclusively from this transfer from the General Fund, we likely will need to see an increase here from the General Fund to the Risk Management Fund to support that. And then, if this commission does approve the Safety Coordinator, assuming it stays in the Risk Management Fund regardless of where it is on the staffing table, we would need to offset that with that transfer from the General Fund. The second item is something that, of course, I know is something this commission loves, and that has to do with the arena. And we will talk more about the details on this later. But right now, in the 2019 agreement that this commission approved, we said that the arena would take $1.50 from each of its tickets that had, that was eligible, and it would pay that to the county at the end of the year. We would put that into a separate fund within the arena reserve, and that would be used exclusively to fund future CIP programs to try and extend the life of that fund. Now, 2020 was supposed to be the first year on which that was based, and of course, COVID hit, and when we get to the arena, you'll see, life just didn't look like we thought it would. So, we are expecting maybe $30,000 to $50,000 total that we might get out of that, and we would be required to do a match. Now, with any kind of luck, the end of this year is going to look better, and we are going to have more ticket fees. What that means then is in 2022, we're going to have to do the match that was required under that same 2019 agreement to match whatever dollars the arena is giving us. This would be the logical place in the budget to put that, because, again, it's moving cash from one place to another. And there is no other source to match that funding other than the General Fund today. So, this budget would likely be the place for that, and we may need to increase. So, with that said, you'll see that the bottom line for the budget transfer request is the same today as it was in '21, at $1.5 million. But based on those two factors we've talked about, we may need to make changes to that when it comes time for the recommended budget, depending on what changes are recommended to you. And so, we'll, of course, talk that out as we go through that. So then, we're going to shift to contingency reserves. Right now, this is 100% in the County General Fund. On the horizon are a couple of things that we'd maybe like to talk with you about, not necessarily today, but to start you to thinking about these. The first one is to reinstitute a compensation contingency that would go across every fund. So right now, the County General Fund may only pay for County General Fund positions. It is actually against the law for us to take cash out of the General Fund and, for example, put it into the EMS Fund. It is illegal to transfer budget authority between funds. And so, what this would allow us to do is to set aside funding if issues come up, if there are market-based studies, if there's a sudden and dramatic change in a market. And I'm not saying only the EMS Fund. I'm using that as an example, because it's obviously something we're talking about right now. But we would want to do that in every certified fund where, right now, we don't have the capacity to ebb and flow. Like this year, we have budgeted only for 100% of actual position costs. And so, some departments may have savings by virtue of vacancies, others don't. That puts them all on inequitable footing if we do something for some and not for others. This would give us an opportunity and give more flexibility to the commission to address that in the future. So, again, nothing to decide today, just something to start thinking about.
Would we be thinking about like a percentage of their, right now, it's 100%?
Yep. It might be 2%.
So you'd say 2% or something like that?
Yeah. And we'll want to be careful, because to the extent we have budget authority, we have to make sure we have cash to cover that budget authority.
Correct.
And so, we don't want to go too crazy, because then we may have to artificially tax in an area to, to fund that. So it'll be kind of a balancing game, but that's something that if there's interest from this commission in pursuing, we can work together on some proposals and bring that to you through the recommended budget.
Okay.
So the second thing on the horizon for us, our technology increases. Certainly, you've heard about it with Odyssey. We have a $1 million contingency now. We may want to have some more flexibility for that as we go forward, and we continue to see these dramatic increases in what we're using for technology, or if we're able to identify, as Commissioner Lopez said earlier this week, some projects where maybe we're investing more in technology. Otherwise, that could give us flexibility mid-year. Certainly, COVID then has taught us a hard lesson about trying to be prepared and anticipate things that are coming. Right now, we have the Public Safety Contingency, but it's not very robust, and it is drawn on quite a bit right now for operations for the District Court or District Attorney. Perhaps something we could think about is having a separate contingency just to respond to crises. And then, finally, contingencies with the other tax funds kind of goes along with the compensation contingency, but potentially, it could be used for other uses. Maybe it wouldn't be earmarked specifically for compensation. It would just be something to have in there in case an issue arises, because, again, we do have over 40 funds that we live in at the county. So, this slide looks a little different than the other slides you've seen. You're going to see the 2021 adopted figures instead of the 2021 revised. If you look at this page in your budget book, you're going to see a much lower figure for 2021 revised because- in case an issue arises. Because again, we do have over 40 funds that we live in at the county. So this slide looks a little different than the other slides you've seen. You're going to see the 2021 adopted figures instead of the 2021 revised. If you look at this page in your budget book, you're going to see a much lower figure for 2021 revised because of the things that are noted in the footnote here. So you can see that we have already used more than 12.5 million of contingency budget this year, mostly because of COVID. And I'll tell you that we probably will come back to you for more before this is all done based on updated estimates that we talked about earlier this week, probably up to about 15 million. So so far, we've taken 12 point, 12.5 million for COVID. We have taken $35,000 to do some additional work for the district attorney space in this building on the second and third floors. And then about 19,500 for the first quarter of federal government relations contract. That will just be built into the budget next year and so that won't be a use of contingency. So then we will move to bond and interest. This is behind its own special tab in your budget book if you're interested in following along.
Lindsay, can I stop you just for a second?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Can you, on the compensation contingency, could you take just a minute and explain the dynamics of the sheriff's department and DA's office compared to what you're recommending with this contingency component? Explain to commissioners the differences maybe there?
Sure. So, so the sheriff and the DA are, are unique, one, because they live in the county's general fund. And so if you remember when we started this discussion, we talked about how all of the contingencies that you're seeing are in the general fund. So that's dynamic number one. Dynamic number two is that, for example, the pay adjustments that were done for the sheriff's office earlier this year, he actually didn't have to access any contingency dollars. He had enough within his own budget to cover that. One of the unique things about elected offices in Kansas is that there's actually some case law that says that once this commission has allocated funding to those elected officials, it's really up to them to decide how to spend it. Now, your row offices actually say they're subject to B O C C personnel policy and pay plan. So that includes your treasurer generally, not the auto license fund, but the, the tax side, the register of deeds and the clerk's office. The sheriff and the DA actually have either case law or specific statute that takes them out of that. They are not subject to county policy in terms of pay. So that is why the sheriff can do things within his own operating budget. He's got specific case law that actually speaks to the sheriff. And then the DA has his own pay plan that he oversees and implements. And so as long as they can afford it within their existing budgets, it's, it's kind of not as, it doesn't impact the rest of the county in the same way because they're on their own pay plans or in their own systems and because they are their own elected offices with different powers and authorities than really any other department. So it is, it's unique and it's weird and it's hard to explain and definitely hard as a concept because it doesn't feel fair. But that's why just the technicalities make it different. Does that get to what you wanted me to talk about? Okay. Any questions on that? Sorry, I didn't mean to jump ahead so fast. Okay. All right. So we will transition to bond and interest then. So again, we have eight county property tax supported funds. Bond and interest is its own fund. It does not have any personnel, thank heavens. So it is funded through a variety of sources, but it is, as you can see on this slide, primarily through property taxes. Of course, as you just talked about here a month or so ago, there are special assessments that also occur. Those happen almost exclusively in this fund because those are used to pay down specific debt service. And then there's a couple of other funding mechanism where you see other funds. That means that like when we talked about the 911 tax fund, we are able to use 911 tax funds to help pay the debt service on the public safety building for that portion. So we get some money in for that. We get a little bit of money in from M A B C D to help pay for the Ronald Reagan debt service, things like that fund this. Also solid waste fee. So here is that budget. You can, this is based on what was adopted in last year's 2021 CIP. Again, on Tuesday, we're going to talk about what's recommended. So this number could change, but probably won't just based on the timing of when we sell bonds. And so you can see the decrease is just because of adjusted debt service as it falls off. So to Commissioner Howell's question the other day about what are we paying on, this slide shows you existing debt. So this does not include what we plan to issue. This is just what we have on the books today. And again, as we talked about, the debt policy calls for 20 years that we were generally for normal general obligation or public building commission debt. And we try to pay 30% principal in the first five years, 60% in the first 10 years, and then have much lower debt payments in the final 10 years. And so that's why you'll see how it's so heavily stacked on the front end, plus there's just debt that's falling off. But-
Yeah, I like that policy. When I learned that policy compared to just a flat 20-year bond payment, that's, I like that policy. It's pretty responsible.
We've got smart, we had smart people who were here, a long time ago, who came up with that. I'm not taking any credit for it, I guess is what I'm saying.
Was that Jim Weber's idea?
Uh, you know, I'm sure he was part of the discussion.
Okay. Thanks.
But we don't want to give him too much credit. He doesn't need a big head.
My compliments to that, the financial, that's very responsible.
Glad to hear it. Yes, I like it too. Does make planning for it a little bit exciting though. Also then, to talk about what's on the horizon, it's always useful to talk about significant retiring debt service. And to Commissioner Howell's point the other day about mill levy rate, when we had tied the target mill levy rate to the debt policy, it was based on the debt we thought was going to fall off in 2023. And so that's what this focuses on. So you can see we have exploration place debt that we expect to pay the final payment on in 2022. We also have some pretty expensive, $19 million worth of road and bridge debt that's going to fall off. We have the juvenile justice complex that falls off in 2023. We have some other refundings of some prior KDOT debt that falls off in '24, so not a lot. In 2025, we have the public safety building that gets paid off. And then in 2026, we have the juvenile justice building. And so then, just a couple others at the bottom, even though they're not in the life of this five-year forecast that we look at, there's still pretty significant spirit. We, we did a 10-year bond to pay for that incentive that was provided to them a few years ago. That ends in 2028. And then NCAT ends also in 2028. And so those are some of the largest debt service things that we have because really, as we talked about, 2008 was kind of the last year. We did a whole lot of big debt just because then the recession hit. And so we have some significant debt service falling off, which is why with our record number of CIP projects that we have this year, it's not necessarily as concerning to me as it otherwise could be in a different year where we didn't have some of this flexibility coming up. So now we're going to shift back to the back of your book, the culture and recreation section, and we're going to talk about the interest bank arena. You know the mission of the arena. I'm not going to get into that because I think we're going to spend quite a bit of time maybe on this slide. So this slide depicts the 2021 revised budget and the 2022 requested budget. There are so many moving parts to the arena right now. In 2019, we adopted a normal extension to the arena's management agreement with ASM Global slash SMG, whatever you want to call them. That agreement was in place for one year when COVID hit. And so of course, mid-year last year, we went into force majeure where we either walked away from the agreement entirely or we came up with a creative solution. And so for last year, we, at the end of the year, reimbursed ASM Global for its net operating loss of just over $400,000. But we negotiated a separate one-year agreement for 2021 that looked more like what you might see at other places where we don't have kind of that unique profit sharing agreement where in a normal year, money comes in, ASM Global gets the first $400,000 and then we split everything else after that. This year, we are just basically going to pay the net operating loss on a monthly basis because they have cash flow issues because they don't have events. And then hopefully by the end of the year, when things flip and they start bringing in revenue, we will get a check each month to deposit back in and hopefully offset how much we are going to pay out. So because we don't know what that operating loss looks like for the year, we are doing transfers on a monthly basis to cover the net operating losses out of the arena reserve into their operating fund center. So the 2021 revised reflects three of those transfers. Hopefully we don't have a whole lot more of those. Hopefully by the fall, we're starting to have some events and we can quit having to pay anything. But for now, this is what that looks like. So you can see listed in that first footnote for January, we reimbursed the arena for net operating losses of just about $186,000. In February, little bit less, about $166,000. In March, it was $329,000. Why that increase? That is because, as you probably all remember hearing about, there were some discrepancy, not discrepancies, disagreements between the Thunder and the arena as to how last year's suite fees ought to be handled. We had thought that that revenue would just simply be moved forward into this year and applied against next year's suite agreements because obviously those suite holders didn't get to experience really the benefit of the arena last year. The way the contract was worded was Thunder's, they were entitled to what was paid. So basically, the, I think the spirit was we were going to push it out and then that wasn't necessarily going to work for the team because they had ongoing things that they were doing. And so ultimately, it was resolved that the arena would basically pay the portion of the revenues that had been received, reduce some rent, do some things. And so that was settled out in March. And so that's why there's that one-time increase. We expect that to go back to more normal levels in April and beyond, just depending on what events happened. So then let's talk about capital improvements. So we have flat budgets. And so I took that same approach in the request here for capital improvements. Their 2021 adopted budget, so remember, remember the timing on that. It was in August of last year that we adopted that. That had a budget of 1,030,000. Now, they don't actually have to turn in their budget to us until October 1. And so we were able to work with them, thanks to the impact of COVID and everything, to really whittle that actual capital improvement number down. If you remember, less than $300,000. But this is what was in the adopted budget last year and therefore carried forward to the revised. So that's the number that we're including for '22, but there's still a lot of discussion that has to happen between now and October when we get that number. So this is what's in today. It may change even between now and the recommended. And then it may actually be a different number when we actually mutually agree on what that CIP is going to be as of October 1. And then the very final thing I want to say on this slide is the same thing I say every year. This is not a balance sheet. This is basically the, the money coming in, the money going out. You know, I think we, we hear sometimes about depreciation happening with the arena in terms of actuals. That happens more on an accounting basis, less on a budgetary basis. So we don't represent that information here. So and Commissioner Dennis, I see the red light on your microphone is on.
Well, thank you.
We don't need chairman anymore.
Right?
You can just run back there.
I got it for you, chairman. Just sit back.
This organization runs itself.
Well, thank you. I might have misunderstood you. The March operating loss of $329,000, did you say that was because of the Thunder or?
A portion of it was. Kind of the difference between the normal amount and that higher amount is because of how they chose to recognize and attribute and pay last year's revenue received for suite fees to the Thunder instead of carrying it forward to July, which is when, which is kind of what had, we had thought was going to happen.
I've got kind of general question about the Thunder. Are we making any money off of that at all? Or is it a total loss because we're having the Thunder play there?
Um, I would, I would have AJ probably answer that. I would say in a typical year where we have other events happening, there is operating income that comes out of each game, not a ton. This year, just because of the nature, we have had a game or two where there has not been profit, which is part of why you see these operating losses. It takes people to be in the facility to run those games. And, and those costs aren't always totally offset by the Thunder. But I, I can get more details and give you a better answer.
I'd like more information about Thunder. I know that the arena contracts with the Thunder, so we're kind of out of it because we contract with the arena. But my, my concern is every time I turn around, my, the Thunder is asking to cut the amount of money that they're paying, that they don't want to pay, that they're suing AJ and folks. I, I just want to know is it, is it, and again, it's AJ's decision, but it's impacting us.
It is this year for sure.
And as a result of that, I, I just need to know, is it worth keeping the Thunder in there? Or should we kind of urge AJ to just push them out? Because I, I can't see us subsidizing that organization if, if it's costing the taxpayers money.
Well, and I think we can definitely get you the information on this year. This year, we do have a greater, I would say, involvement because we are kind of the backstop. I think typically we try and, and stay out of those things to avoid any kind of contract interference issues. But I think this year, we have more of a right to ask those questions than we otherwise typically would. So I'm happy to get that information.
Okay. Well, we're not running a charity. So I want to make sure everybody understands. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think I have a different perspective on this and that is that this arena, again, is taxpayer owned. And the reason we have the arena primarily is it's a draw to the community to have something that we can have big shows, we can have fun things. I, I plan on, I guess, I think it's at the arena. I think it is. There's a monster truck thing coming up. I'm hearing about this from my kids. And so $37 a ticket. We're going to go, we're going to go and enjoy that, it sounds like. So the, the hockey is one of those things where there's a lot of folks in town that can't afford to go to share, they can't afford to go to, you know, some of these very expensive concerts, but they can maybe enjoy hockey. And so the reality is we, we, as a county promoted the interest bank arena. At this community, we would get to enjoy this. And I think this is part of our offering to the community. A lot of these event, a lot of these things in the community, whether it be the art museum or Botanica or Cowtown or the All American Indian Center or the, you know, any, any of these community things, especially even the zoo and exploration place we just talked about, there is taxpayer dollars that connect to those things to make them happen. And the interest bank arena does cost taxpayer money, at least it will, because the reserve fund eventually will run out, no question. And we will have to continue to provide some type of funding to keep that facility pristine and operational going forward. So the reality is, I, I think for us not to have hockey would be a huge, a huge disappointment to this community. I have had the privilege of going to a few hockey games in the last several months and it's been tremendous fun actually. And I think that we, we, we represent, you know, against another opportunity for our people to enjoy. And so, you know, this is behind the scenes type of stuff that people don't really want to have to think about very much. But the reality is, I think it's important to this community to have hockey. And I don't, I don't want to be down on hockey because of this type of stuff. I, I think we need to find a way to solve, solve these problems. And I think the pandemic was, was a, was a challenge, obviously, but it's not something I think we should make a, you know, a decision to push hockey out of this community because of what happened in 2020. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Lindsay, can you just walk me through this again? So in January, because of our agreement with, what is it, SMG?
The contract is with SMG. Let's just call it SMG for simplicity.
SMG, okay. So we have an agreement with them that says we're gonna, whatever the agreement says, that we're going to pay them-
Basically, what, if they spend more than they bring in in a month, we're going to reimburse them for that difference for that month. Then hopefully by the end of the year, that will flip. They will start bringing in revenue and we will get that money from them as opposed to having to pay them. So for, for however long this pandemic lasts, there's not enough activities happening to pay for the upkeep of the facility, the keeping the lights on, keeping the bare minimum staff. You know, almost all their staff, I think all of their staff are just some degree furloughed, either partial or fully at this point. And so for those people who come in and were working security, because we, we asked them to maintain 24/7 security on that asset. For those people who are getting paid, they have to be paid their salary, their benefits. So that all gets chalked or all put together each month. They show us how much revenue came in. And if there's that gap, then we, we write them a check for the difference.
So now re-explain to me in March and the negotiations with hockey and whatnot.
Okay.
Please tell me that again.
Okay. So last year in 2020, the arena billed its premium seat holders for their agreements. Some of those people paid, a lot did not. Out of fear that the people who paid or didn't pay would walk away from their agreements if they forced the issue, they basically, and this is consistent with what happened across the country. if they forced the issue, they basically, and this is consistent with what happened across the country, they basically said, we're going to go ahead and hold on your money, but we're going to carry it forward into next year. And hopefully when events start up around July 1st, we're going to take the money that you seat holders paid and we're going to apply it to your accounts for next year. So we're not even necessarily going to really act as though we've got the money, right? It's just going to happen for next year. So that was the plan. The problem is that the Thunder have an agreement with SMG. And that says when, when you get paid, you need to give us our money. Well, number one, the arena didn't, or SMG didn't have everybody's money. And number two, they had this plan in place to try and defer that to next year and apply it to next year's agreements. The Thunder basically said, we can't operate like that. We need that money, that need, you know, we're already hurting. And so there was a lawsuit filed. And the, the outcome of the settlement to try and keep that from turning into a big thing and blowing up was that the Thunder would go ahead and get that portion of the revenue that they were paid, that the, that SMG was paid, that they would normally have gotten under an agreement. And they would go ahead and get that. The way the financials worked out, that went ahead and got paid in March because of the timing of the settlement. So that is the difference between what you, I would normally maybe expect to see, $175,000 per month. I don't have the, the detailed numbers with me. But that went up in March because of that. That payment to them to kind of settle this issue and keep it from turning into a much bigger thing where maybe hockey would have canceled.
All right.
Lindsay, is it fair to say then that as this moves forward and hockey plays this season, next season, that that money will balance out in the end? Or will they then want revenue from those premium seats again?
I, I, they will want the revenues that they're entitled to when everyone else pays their contracts. They've only received the portion for the people that have paid. Now, how that's actually ultimately going to work out, I don't know. That's between AJ and, and them. But I can certainly share what information I have when I get it.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Commissioner Howell that having hockey at the arena is something that the community would love to have. The difference between that and the other organizations that Commissioner Howell mentioned with the zoo and Exploration Place and so forth is that they're all nonprofit. And whether the hockey is for profit, they want to make a profit off of that. And I don't think that it's government's responsibility to ensure that somebody makes a profit. They're, they're, they have risks when they decide to have a business of any kind. So if, if, if we're in the, if we're going to say that we're going to tell the taxpayers that they're going to ensure a profit for someone, I think that that's absolutely wrong. But again, I, I agree with Commissioner Howell that that is an asset if it doesn't cost the taxpayers money to, to ensure a profit. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a, I guess a response to that, you know, and he's right. They are for profit, and that does make them different. But I, I guess I would say that's kind of the basis of all these pieces of legislation happening in Topeka right now. When businesses were not allowed to operate and they were shut down by government, by health orders and restrictions and government, you know, gathering limits and everything else, these for-profit companies could not make money. And, and again, had they been allowed to operate, this wouldn't be, this wouldn't even be a discussion right now. But they were basically given all of the risk and no, no chance to make money. And there, again, that's the burden of government that says your, your business model can't possibly work because we're not going to let you make money. It's just not possible this year. I, I don't know if that's what the lawsuit was about or not. Again, I'm glad it was settled in the courts, we didn't have to get involved in it. I'm sure that, I'm sure that ASM or SMG defended their side very, defended their side very well. I'm sure that the Thunder did their side very well. And it's got settled, someone else figured it out. That's fine. I don't really want to focus on that so much because really it's not even our business today. What I'm just saying is going forward, the Thunder can make money here in Wichita. It's good for this community. And I think for us to, I guess, know about this settlement that happened in March, it's interesting, but isn't really, it's not our decision to make anyway. At the end of the day, I want Thunder to be part of our offering to this community. I think it needs to stay. And, and I, and I know these, these debates continue to happen for some reason. At the end of the day, I'm glad, I'm glad we have Thunder. I don't want to see it go away. And I think it's a, it's a very important part of, of making this community vibrant and fun for people to live here. And if we don't have things like that, then people don't necessarily want to live here. So in that regard, it is, it is a very good thing. I don't want to focus on 2020. Once again, this wasn't even our issue. Am I right about that? This was settled in the courts. So you, you briefed us on it, and we know about it now. But we didn't have, we didn't have a decision to make. Whether we like it or we don't like it, it doesn't really matter. At the end of the day, I just want Thunder to, I want Thunder, Thunder to, you know, hopefully make money. That's their job to figure that out. And I want them to have the right to, to use the arena, and the arena should accommodate them. I would also say that SMG has it in their contract. They can't lose money. You talked about that today. You talked about the forced majority issue. They really can't lose money. They're also for-profit business. But there's no way they can lose money, no matter what happens, even in act of God. So again, that's, that, that, that may seem strange, but that's the absolute truth. SMG is kind of like an insurance company. They'll never lose. Thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you. And we'll watch this play out through this year. And it was a bad year last year, and who knows? But I trust that hopefully, I, I agree, and I think that's a, almost a quality of life issue and improvement. Restaurants around there and others are probably appreciative. So there's probably some other lingering things, but let's move on. So we've had a good discussion on it. Thank you for re-explaining for everybody. Okay?
My pleasure. All right. We will move to economic development then. So this is, this was part of the budget that you saw on the front page, really. It does report, you know, Brent still wears his economic development hat. He also has Kyle Fiedler, who you all have probably met, who has worn many hats over the last year, but typically will be the economic development analyst. So the program is basically done to try and respond to requests from the community, to try and be a representative of the county, to try and spur growth where possible, and to help partner with folks to do so. It is 100% from the county's general fund. Going forward, we know that there is tremendous interest in ARPA. One of the primary reasons that ARPA was passed was to try and do recovery, right? And so that means that it is designed to provide opportunities to the community, not just Sedgwick County, there will be many other buckets. And so part of the role of this function will be to try and capitalize on that, to try and help our community as much as possible. Also, you've heard Brent and Kyle talk about the foreign trade zone, trying to get that started back up in a way that is meaningful and helpful to the community. And then, of course, we hope that now that things are getting better, that we'll start to see the return of more initiatives for discussion and consideration by the commission. So you can see the budget is almost flat, recurring theme. The personnel did slightly go up, but contractuals and commodities stayed flat. So any discussion on economic development?
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think about the time when I came on the commission, my economic development was about $400,000 or something like that. And now it's $1.9 million. And I went through the budget book and I can't find what we're spending $1.9 million on. At some point, just give us a listing of what goes into that $1.9 million so that I got a kind of an idea of what the heck we're spending money on, because it's gone up an awful lot in a very short period of time.
Well, and I, I will give you some reassurance. The budget itself is not going to, just how we spend it, has maybe increased slightly. But really, that, that $400,000 is the forecasted amount. It's how much we had spent on GWP, or things like the Global Export Plan, or things like that. So this budget has stayed flat over these years. So in case something did come up. But really, we have stayed around that $400,000 to $450,000 mark. But yes, we can get you a table that shows exactly how much we've paid over time and, and give you some reassurance that we're really not even thinking about touching that whole budget.
Okay.
Unless you tell us to.
Appreciate it. Now that makes sense.
Commissioner Howell?
I think this is a, thank you, Chairman. I think this is a little bit of history here is important because a number of years ago, when I first came on the commission, we, we had, GWP was part of our budget presentation. And we basically earmarked money in the budget for that purpose. But then they came later on and said, and made their presentation, and we had a subsequent resolution that essentially funded what we had promised in the budget at that point. I think this, the strategy right now is we, we take the larger chunk of money and we let, we still let them apply for those funds when they would normally come around. But we're looking at the, we're looking at the total budget rather than the details within what that money would normally fund. So years ago, rather than essentially earmark money for those specific expenditures, we have kind of a top dollar here. It gives us some freedom to, I guess, pivot within this budget amount to find the best use of that money. And I, and I assume GWP will be asking for their $400,000 and all that goes. And, and so there'll be a number of things we'll do with that money. But as you said, I think it's been flat. So again, this is just a, a different way of presenting the same data. Is that fair?
Yes.
All right. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Jim, for that history lesson.
Yep.
Which is good for us all. Okay.
Okay. We're almost done. So WSU is the final item we're going to talk about. So we, of course, this commission does not tell WSU how to spend its money. This mill levy is the result of a, a law that was passed in 1963 when basically Wichita State became Wichita State, when it became a state university. And so that law said that 1.5 mils would be levied by the city of Wichita at that time and would be provided to WSU. And the statute focused mainly on debt service that was in place at that time to make sure that it could continue to be paid after it transitioned. But it also said that anything that was left could be used by the WSU Board of Trustees for purposes within the board's scope. And that scope is pretty broad. You can see what it says here, supporting the educational undertakings of the university. So then in 1987, the city and the county together decided that WSU was more than just a city-focused university, that it was providing greater support to the county at large. And so we entered into an MOU with the city whereby we would have a county-wide property tax instead of just a city of Wichita property tax. And that built on the statute and also incorporated that the funds could be used for the support and enhancement of research, educational programs, and facilities. And so the county assesses 1.5 mils by statute, never ever technically adjusted. It is what it is. Whatever that assessed value is that it generates, we remit to Wichita State University. And then they in turn allocate it. Now, one of the interesting things about that 1.5 mils is that because of the way that Senate Bill 13 is written, is if we don't go in to do something to reduce the taxes in other parts of the county, if that assessed value creeps up, we could send a mailer literally just for the value of the increase on that 1.5 mils, because it is statutorily set. So another hidden gem that they don't necessarily think through, right? All the time, things to, to pick up and fix.
That's a good catch. I didn't even realize that.
So it's what you pay us for. So, so that is something that's on the horizon. There's not really anything else on the horizon because we give that money to WSU. So, Dr., or Dr. Cruz, just promoted you. Commissioner Cruz. Sorry. Commissioner Cruz the other day had asked about how the funding is allocated. So what I have on this slide is not anything specific. I want to be very clear about that. This is literally taking last year's numbers that they gave us, throwing them in, and then you'll see in the contingency, we bumped it up based on how much we think assessed value is going to go up. So again, I'm going to come back and harp on some technical details. This is a tax fund, so it's certified. So you guys cannot just take a 3-2 vote like you could with a grant in the middle of the year and give them more budget authority. So let's just say we got really lucky and we collected more revenue than we thought we would in a year. We still have to, by statute in this MOU, pay it to WSU. So we throw in a contingency each year, just to make sure, typically we aim for $300,000, to make sure that we can give them everything. Doesn't mean we have to spend it. It just means we have to pay them if we get it. So this year, we have not yet coordinated with them to figure out what their 2022 request is going to look like. And so for convenience of this discussion, we just stuck it in the contingency line. And I'm being completely honest with you that that will get updated by the time you have a recommended budget. But that is what you see here. Now, you can see those different programs, capital improvement, including debt service. Probably the largest way they use those funds is something that actually gets reported in our annual financial report. And that is the experiential engineering building on their innovation campus. We actually levied that debt for them. That was something that we pointed out in that presentation on Wednesday. We levied that for them. We actually have an agreement with them where they, we will pay their debt service for them because we're the ones who issued that debt. And then we turn over the rest of it. Now, you'll see that there's economic and community, including interns, support. They in turn pay for two of our interns. And then they give us a pot of $100,000 each year for special projects, which historically we use for a third intern. But we can also use it for other things. So examples would be the compensation plan that WSU is helping us with now. That's being funded with the special project money that they gave us. The strategic plan project that we went through a couple of years ago that they facilitated was paid for with mill levy funds. So it actually saves us money. It's a good partnership. And so that is it. I am happy to answer any questions.
Lindsay, thanks again. Obviously, you and your staff have done a wonderful job of trying to put this together and to explain it to us.
Mr. Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of quick, quick questions. I'm trying to remember, was that 1987 decision, was that a public vote that made that happen?
It would have had to have been. It was an MOU that was adopted.
I mean, so did the, the electors of the city of Kentucky voted for this?
Oh, no, it was not a vote of the public. It was a public vote by this commission, excuse me.
By the commission?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And as a consequence of that decision, that Wichita theoretically dropped one and a half mils off of their side tax collection because we collected for them.
Correct.
Right? Okay. Well, another, I guess, a comment going clear back to the beginning, not so much on WSU, but a question on back on bond and interest for just a second. That slide you have that shows that summary of the, if I could find it, bond savings.
Is it this one that I have up here, sir?
That's it. Yeah. Page, slide 21. That's it. Does that include special assessment tax, special, special assessment bonds?
Yes, it is everything.
That's everything. Okay. Do we know what portion of that is, is special assessment bonds?
I, I have that upstairs and can get it to you, but I don't have it right here. I'm sorry.
You can just send me a note later on. It'll be fine. I'd like to see that. So this is the chart that I, I, I think we ought to get some visibility on this chart. I would like to see this on our website. I'd like to see this in our budget book.
It is in the budget book.
I can't find it.
Not in this one, in the real, like the real one, that has the narrative in it.
All right. That's good enough. And, and that'd be great. And, and I think it might be good to put a total at the bottom of the principal and interest columns.
Okay.
And the total payments. So we can kind of compare, you know, what is our, what's our cost? What's the cost of doing bonding? I think it'd be good to have that totaled at the bottom. Okay?
No problem.
Thank you very much. That's all my questions.
Okay. I don't see any others. Thank you for this session. I, I'm looking at the calendar. We are at nine o'clock on Monday.
That's correct.
Nine to 11:30, and then again, one to four. So Monday will be a, a big day. Thank you whoever is putting this stuff in front of us so we know kind of what the schedule and the next order of events are. That's helpful. Thank you. Any news that we need to know about going into Monday? Any homework we're supposed to work on? Tasks, assignments? Find some new material to bring Monday? Okay.
You don't just come up with a little slide?
Okay. Anybody else have anything that they want to express? Okay. Thanks again to all the department heads, commissioners. Thank you for being here. Good session. And so we will see everybody Monday and have a safe weekend. Happy Mother's Day to everybody. Happy Chocolate Day and happy everything else. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.